Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to everyone who's here with us this evening. I would like to begin by reporting on executive sessions. The board met in executive session on the following dates and discussed the noted topics. On March 15th, we discussed personnel and on March 22nd, we discussed personnel. At this point, I'd like to turn over the meeting to our wonderful students, Sammy and Sophie, to give us their report. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I hope you have all enjoyed the first couple of days of spring. At RHS, the warm weather has certainly raised spirits and is helping students make it through the long month of March. The early arrival of this warm weather has also been a huge bonus for the beginning of spring sports, which Sophie and I will talk more about later. Also, to give an update, since RHS has gone mask optional, everything is running smoothly. Most students do not wear masks, but there are plenty who still do and both go along their school days like normal. I think most students are more concerned about their third quarter grades in prom dates than masks at this point. Before I get into some spring sports news, it is important to give a quick recap of Radnor's impressive end to the winter season. To start, the boys hockey team made it all the way to the second round of Central League Championships. However, they unfortunately lost in the number one ranked Haviford earlier in March. The Radnor boys basketball team also had an impressive postseason performance. On March 5th, the boys played in the district final for the first time in 62 years. The game took place at Temple University, but this didn't stop Radnor's loyal student fan section from filling nearly three buses to go cheer on our team. Unfortunately, with seven seconds left in the game, Radnor's opponent, the defending champions Chester High School, pulled ahead to win the game 66-65. The team also made it to the state tournament for the first time since 2006. They had an impressive victory in the first round of the tournament, winning 57-34, but unfortunately lost in the second round against the nationally ranked Imhotep Charter School. Despite the losses, the team certainly made the school proud with both of these historic achievements. For the final winter season accomplishment, on Sunday, March 13th, Lucy Henkel established herself as the 34th fastest 800 runner in the country for indoor track. Hosted by New Balance, Indoor Track Nationals took place at the Armory in New York, where Lucy ran an impressive 218 and ended an overall amazing season. By the time Lucy was running in Nationals, spring sports back in Radnor were already in full swing. Practices for most teams began March 7th and the high school is always bustling after school these days. With the construction, the track team spends half their time at the high school while getting to try out some other tracks at different schools like Herndon and Conestoga on workout days. Sophie will talk more about other spring sports and winter sports in a bit, but I think it's time to move on to some school events and club news. March 2nd marked a very important day in the district and for the entire country as it was Read Across America. Continuing on a tradition that I loved as an elementary schooler, RHS students traveled from the high school to Radnor Elementary School to read some of their favorite stories to the young students. Read Across America now celebrates any and all books, not just Dr. Seuss, allowing students to read so many fun stories. I also know that RHS students were not the only guest readers for this special day, as I heard that a lot of administrators and board members made appearances as well. Of course, for a little elementary school student, high school seems pretty thrilling, so the kids had a lot of fun asking questions about what high school is like, and I think our RHS guest readers had an equally good time listening to the questions and responding. After reporting it was going to happen and then reporting it was canceled, I'm happy to finally be able to say that senior semi occurred this past weekend and it was a huge success. Seniors gathered in the lobby from 7:30 to 10:00, or to 10:00 this past Saturday for a night of dancing and socializing with their friends. The lobby was transformed with glowing LED lights and balloons, while the black box had a complete makeover that included cornhole, purple lighting, and more. Over the past few months, the junior student council has spent much time deliberating on what they want their class's RAF grant to fund. Given that the RHS library has not been redone for some time and many high schoolers are under constant stress, the juniors thought that we could use our class's grant to help create a comfortable, relaxing zone in the library unofficially labeled a Zen Den. This space would hopefully include features meant to prioritize and support mental health. If the grant idea is approved, the juniors hope to do a movie night to fundraise as a supplement to the RAF funds. Unfortunately, the ethics pool team was unable to celebrate the 10-year anniversary of their trip to the national championship with a return visit, but nine students represented RHS in the regional competition hosted by Villanova University on Zoom last month. The club sponsor Carl Rosen explained that the winning team is the one that is most successful at illuminating the ethical dimensions of situations like how the media should report on controversial science, whether to try to prevent suffering in wild animals, how to balance personal privacy with law enforcement requests, and more. Senior captains and four-year starters Juliana Bryant and Sam Chanonson helped Mr. Rosen prepare the teams for the tournament, where they lost two extremely tight matches, including one by a single point on a single judge's scorecard to the eventual championships from Princeton High School. One final important event that occurred this past month was the student walkout led by the Activism for Student Equity Club, also known as AFSE. The club held the walkout in support of adequate school funding for all schools across Pennsylvania. The walkout followed the end to a long court case in the Commonwealth Court of Pennsylvania that aims to increase school funding, as only 16% of schools in the state receive sufficient resources. Around 9:30 on March 15th, student leaders from AFSE shared how critical it is for a school like Radnor who has adequate funding to show our support for the decision to increase funding for other schools who are less advantaged. Many RHS students gathered in the cafeteria courtyard to listen, cheer, and learn more about the issue. I hope you all have a great night and I will now pass it on to Sophie.
Thank you, Sammy. Good evening, everyone, and happy spring. As we head into spring, Radnor has some new exciting things on the way. Since our last meeting, all winter sports have officially wrapped up. Both the boys and the girls basketball team competed one last time this season, as Sammy mentioned previously. The girls emerged victorious over Upper Moreland, winning 46-42 in their second matchup in districts. Unfortunately, the team lost in a close semifinal game against Villa Maria. However, this was a great season for the girls and it looks like there is a bright future ahead for Radnor's basketball program. As well, the boys and the girls swimming and diving teams took a trip to Bucknell University a few days ago to compete in the PA State Championships. The boys ended the day strong by placing 20th for the 200 medley relay, and the girls ended the day in sixth overall with help from Maely Lindgren, Audrey Collins, Avery Barber, and many more. It was a great couple of days for the team to bond. The team is now saddened that the season is over, but all are grateful for the amazing run they had. Now that spring is in the air, so are spring sports. Spring sports tryouts happened recently and the teams are preparing for their first games this week. Both the girls and the boys lacrosse team have been working hard out on Inky Field for their first games this week against Unionville and LaSalle High School. With a tremendous season last year, both the girls and the boys lacrosse teams are looking forward to finally playing after a long winter. Baseball and softball began practicing last week. Both teams are looking forward to their upcoming games. As well, Radnor baseball hosted a yoga fundraiser at Verge this Sunday. The proceeds went to the team's program and the event was open to all ages and levels of experience. Since girls tennis occurred in the fall, boys tennis now has the chance to play. The team had their tryouts and made their pairings for doubles and matches for singles. All of the spring sports teams look forward to their season ahead, and in the upcoming school board meetings, we will hopefully have more information on their scores. On March 3rd, 4th, and 5th, the Radnor High School production of Mama Mia happened. The show was hands down spectacular and the talent was through the roof. As well, the set, which displayed Donna's Tavern, was very realistic and transported you to Greece. The cast was so excited to finally perform in person live, since they had to perform virtually due to COVID last year. As well, it was amazing to see so many students, teachers, community members, and even a few school board members at the performance to support RHS actors. After a few months of planning, the freshman semiformal finally happened at the end of February. The dance occurred in the high school cafeteria and was transformed into a masquerade ball. From the photos, it looks like many upperclassmen and freshmen enjoyed their time. In light of a more serious topic, the freshmen helped to organize a donation drive for Ukraine. Donations such as diapers, baby wipes, socks, deodorant, and other supplies are needed and can be dropped off in room 108, 18, or the nurse's office for any high schoolers wondering how they can help. Students could also buy a ribbon to support the cause, as the money went directly towards the New World Association of Immigrants from Eastern Europe. These donations are very much appreciated. Also this spring, a new club will start at RHS. Penn Medicine, across the street from the school, has joined an organization called Greener Partners to establish a small working farm on the Penn property, and a group of RHS students will be joining the project as farmers. Greener Partners, which has implemented similar projects at other hospitals on other large properties, estimates that this farm will go several hundred pounds per year of fresh vegetables that will be donated directly to local food banks. The students will literally be getting their hands dirty with physical labor as well as planning and learning about agriculture. The first planting is scheduled for spring 2023, and the club's first meeting is soon approaching as it will take place after spring break. Recently, the results of the Keystone Press Awards for Student Journalism came out. The Radnorite received nine awards, which consisted of a mix of first, second, third, or honorable mention. Some of the students who received awards included our very own Sammy Rosen, who received three awards, including one for her podcast, Ian Sun for his pieces on diversity, Ellie Davis for her article on Dr. John Crosby, Noah Conan for Grubbin' with the Girls, and many more. The Radnorite is extremely proud of these individuals for their amazing pieces in student journalism. As always, thank you for your time again and we hope you have a good night.
Thank you, Sammy and Sophie. Learned quite a few new things from you both today, so the Greener Partners, that sounds really exciting, and the Zen Den, I might have to stop by and visit the Zen Den when it's ready. Let us know.
You think they refer to board meetings as the Zen Den?
I like that. It's, it's, uh, sounds good. All right, so we're going to move at this point into our report from Superintendent, Dr. Bachelor.
Good evening. It's good to see everyone. Every time I look at the people that are students that are here for recognitions, I always go back to, maybe we need to adjust the agenda and I should go after the recognitions, because I feel badly that you have to sit through, I promised to keep it brief, you have to sit through my presentation now. And Sammy and Sophie, thank you for all your remarks as well. So very quickly tonight, I just want to share, we've been, you know, for two years now, each month, we've been just sharing our cases at our board meetings and we're continuing to do so. I am questioning whether we, you know, possibly may not have to share this next month. I was very pleased to see, you might need your glasses, our last week, we had reported three cases here in the district, so we're continuing to track cases. Our nurses are still working with the administration in each building, working with our families to track our cases. And we still publish those each week for our community to see, but we're very pleased with what we see with the numbers and the trend. Moving to the next slide. Just a reminder and wanted to share both with the board and community that we have continued to make some adjustments as the numbers have decreased of COVID cases. It's hard to believe, it was just one month ago, we were here together discussing masking, how much has changed so quickly, but we also have made adjustments to our cafeterias. Some of those changes happened at the high school and the middle school already this past week. Our elementary program will be looking at adjusting each at different times the spacing in the cafeteria, and the principals will share that when that happens at each building. The reason it's happening at different times is honestly, at this point, it's down to logistics. It's logistics of where did we store the tables and everything at those particular buildings and allocating the resources to then bring those tables back in. Some of the tables wound up, you know, in storage units off our campus. So we're excited, though, that those moves are going well as we've moved forward as a district. Next on the slide, I wanted to share with you that we've advertised to our community and to all of our staff that we held three information nights. We titled it "Shaping the Future," where we wanted to talk about developing a comprehensive long-term facilities plan for our district. It is absolutely critical that we develop a long-term facilities plan. Our school board identified this several years, two years ago, as a district goal initiative for us to evaluate the conditions of our building, to evaluate our educational program that we have in all of our building, and also to look at the long-term financial impact. We want to make sure as a school district, we not only make sure that our buildings are able to support the educational program that we put forward, that we expect in our district, but also to make sure that we're being good stewards of our tax dollars and taking care of these buildings. And our buildings' ages range. We have buildings that, you know, that range in condition and in range, obviously, in when they were built. So we had an opportunity, you can see pictures on the slide of those three evenings, it was open to everybody in the community. We have a board meeting coming up on April 2019. Thank you. I can't see from the distance. April 19th, we're going to hold a special board meeting to discuss both our budget, but we're also going to be discussing an update on some of the information we received at these evening meetings and some of our next steps moving forward in developing this long-term facilities plan for our district. There is a website, on our website, there is a link to an area on our website where you can find out more information about this and also email addresses if you'd like to email us as well with any input. We would appreciate that. So for students who are in the room, if you haven't heard, I have a feeling you've all heard, because once we let the teachers know, it gets out pretty quickly. It is looking, knock on wood, it is looking pretty good. I did have, we did do a poll, what was the latest snow day that we all know of? And one administrator, he will remain anonymous, did say, oh, there was a day, April, early April, there was a snow day one year, and I said, come on, really? But we are very close to making that decision that we did not use any of our snow days this year. So we build three days into our calendar. So since we did not use any of our snow days this year, we'll give those three days back. So we will be announcing officially very soon that the last student day will move from instead of January 21st to, excuse me, did I say January? Dear goodness, June, June 21st. You'd like that, wouldn't you? They do. June, from June 21st to June 16th. Do I have that accurate? I can't see with all the two-by-fours and everything. So we are, you know, and I will say that this year, we set forward a plan. Snow days still exist in Radnor when we have a sizable snowstorm, but at the same time, save summer days also exist, and the ability to have virtual learning, and we used that one day this year, I think it was only one day, right, this year that we used a virtual day? And I was happy we did it that day. It turned out not to be as large of a storm, but if we do have days where we can, you know, there's a large snowstorm and we're gonna, snow days may still happen, but it's awfully nice when we're sitting at this time of year and the save summer days, that those virtual learning day, that one day allowed us to give back these three days. So we'll be excited to share that officially in the next coming, in the upcoming weeks. And then we had at our last curriculum meeting, just a reminder to the full board and to our community, that we had our annual report of district data and student achievement. It's all posted on our website. The annual report of district data and student achievement is a very comprehensive booklet filled with a lot of information about not only our achievement, but other statistics in the district. I just want to thank the administrative team for all the efforts and the principals for everything that they do to put this booklet together to share with our community, and also at the same time, there's a PowerPoint that goes along with that. And that PowerPoint also highlights not only, you know, we identify what are our strengths and what are the areas that we need to improve as a district, but that we also talk about some highlights that our principals joined the meeting, the curriculum meeting, we'll be coming to next month's curriculum meeting as well, talk about some of the highlights and some of the things that we're really proud of happening in the district, and just a few of those items are listed there. When we look at our extended learning program, or we look at the additional mental health supports we've added in the district, we look at our multiple-tiered system of supports, some of our district initiatives that have been happening, you know, throughout the year. So more discussion to come on that as well, and more information on our website on all those items. The next, I don't, you know, talk about reasons to be Radnor proud, and Sammy and Sophie mentioned it, the shows have just been incredible, and then the last weekend of the shows is actually coming up, beginning Thursday, Radnor Elementary has Aladdin, you know, will be starting Thursday evening. So it's really an exciting time for the arts in Radnor this time of year. We had our art show displayed earlier this evening. I think one of you talked about that it's nice to see the high school bustling. It was exciting to be up there and see all the sports, the activities, to see kids coming in to see their artwork, to see all the art displayed at our high school this evening, and our shows, and the talent was truly incredible. I am going to talk to the musical directors at each level. I've had a few board members who said they were, hope to have cameos in the future, so, you know, board members let me know, and we can, you know, provide some cameos, though you will have to sing for an audition. Moving to the next slide, I just want to say on our, on our agenda tonight, we honor our personnel part and our consent agenda. Penny Tansey, who has been our assistant business administrator, while we have plenty of time to celebrate Penny still, but we will be approving her upcoming retirement tonight on the board agenda. I had an opportunity to share with the community about Dr. Anthony Stevenson. Anthony will be moving on to be the HR Director at Tridifred and Easttown School District, just down the street from us, and we're wishing Anthony well as we continue that search to replace him at the principal at Radnor Elementary. And then Ryan Booterbaugh, our assistant principal at the high school, has been offered the position as principal at Northly Middle School in the Pendelco School District, so we congratulate Ryan, and his resignation will be on tonight's agenda as well. So we still have time to celebrate all three of them before they depart, and we can't thank all three of them enough for their service to the district. You know, with Penny, we're happy for her retirement. With Anthony and Ryan, this is the challenge of having great people, that other districts come and try to steal some of our great people, but we're really happy for them and this advancement in their career. And moving on, I wanted to share with the community a new opportunity for community conversation. We're calling it Bagels with Board Members. As we've gone through our board meetings and, you know, often the community wants to come to meetings and interact and have comments with the school board, and the school board meetings are time for us to get the school board work done. We truly value public comment and it is an important part of the process, but the structure of a school board meeting doesn't always give us the opportunity to have dialogue and discussion. So our board members wanted to set up more opportunities to have more dialogue and discussion, more opportunities for community members, parents, staff to attend. So this is going to be the first one that we're, we're going to do as a trial. We'll look to other dates and other times in the future. We're calling it Bagels with the Board, an opportunity, and administration will be there as well, an opportunity for informal discussion, to come talk to board members, to talk about district initiatives and what's been happening in our community. So we're excited for that. And students, you're not allowed to attend that one because it's during the school day. You gotta be in class. Upcoming events, you can see we have many upcoming events that are, as always this time of year, just really picks up when, I always say, it's the musicals, it's the plays, and the spring sports season, that all of a sudden, things really pick up and the speed and energy around the district really picks up till now in the end of the school year. And then last, but certainly not least, I wanted to just share and introduce in a moment, throughout COVID, we had an opportunity as a district to partner with many different groups, and one of those partnerships was with Delaware County. And Delaware County worked very closely with us to help us organize and partner together to offer one of our first vaccine clinics that happened for our entire community. So I'm very excited here tonight to introduce Ms. Elaine Schaefer from Delaware County Council to present something to the school board. So Ms. Schaefer.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bachelor, and thank you to the entire school board and to the administration to have invited us here to present this resolution. I'm Elaine Schaefer, I'm with the county council, I'm one of five. I'm representing all of the others tonight, and I'm also joined by two colleagues tonight. Ed Klein, who's in the back. Ed is with our Department of Emergency Services. He was a co-leader of our COVID task force during the last two years, and he is also the head of our Citizens Corps, our Blue Army of volunteers that helped throughout the, throughout the whole pandemic. And Ryan Hurlinger is our communications department with us, and he was instrumental in communicating during this pandemic, so I'm glad to have them both here with me tonight to do this resolution. So as I said, I'm here tonight to officially offer a resolution in recognition of the school district and commending you for the whole faculty, the staff, the parents, the teachers, everyone who stepped forward for the amazing contribution that you made in our county's fight against COVID. I'm also here because I'm also a Radnor resident. I've lived here for 22 years. I raised all three of my kids here, and they all went through the amazing public schools here. And it was, I cannot tell you how proud I am as a Radnor resident of the way this community came together and handled this crisis. It really was astounding and amazing. Just a year ago, this township and Delaware County COVID-19 Task Force held multiple COVID-19 vaccination clinics at Radnor High School, providing over 6,000 vaccines to residents of Delaware County, not just Radnor residents, residents of Delaware County. And while the high school was a site of many COVID-19 vaccinations with assistance from the county, Radnor also worked with Springfield Pharmacy and provided many more than that 6,000. So really came together to make this happen. Now, it's, it's easy to forget what things were like back then. Now, it's really easy to get a vaccination and it all seems very relaxed and organized. Back then, we will all recall how scary and stressful it was to get vaccinations, and Radnor really stepped forward to make it available to our community when it was hard to do so. And the works, though, all of the work that was required to host these events was simply enormous, but I need to point out that Radnor's involvement in working to protect our community against community emergencies has gone on for decades. There is a program called the Medical Countermeasures Unit, the Medical Countermeasures Program, and for decades, members of the Radnor Township School District and Radnor Township meet regularly to plan and always be ready for community emergencies. And Radnor, the Radnor Township School District is a POD. A POD is a point of dispensing, so this, this area has been trained to be a dispensing place for any kind of emergency. Who knew that it was going to be vaccines and who knew that it was going to be a pandemic? But this community has stepped forward and has for decades. So the work that was done this year and this, and this pandemic was really just the tip of the iceberg of what Radnor has done to step up and support our entire county. There are so many individuals to thank and departments to recognize. We don't have all night, but there are a few people I would really like to call out tonight. And first and foremost, it's Dr. Ken Bachelor, the Radnor Township School District Superintendent for his amazing leadership. Also Todd Stitzel, the Director of Human Resources, and Von Brian, the School District's Assistant Director of Operation, who was our county's point of contact throughout the pandemic, and he was really an invaluable contributor to this effort. Thank you also to Dr. Douglas Kent, Radnor Middle School Assistant Principal, and Dr. Joseph McNamara, who was Rad, who is Radnor's High School Assistant Principal, who also stepped up. The school district has many, many nurses as well, and I'm going to name these nurses individually, because they have been on the ground since the beginning, continue to be on the ground every day. I'm going to name these names, and anyone and everyone who sees these people in the hallway, in the grocery store, please go approach them and say thank you for your work. These nurses are Julie Barboza, Stephanie Grabuski, Lindsay Hopkins, Maureen Lorario, Winfried Murray, Patricia Resnick, Agnes Silvery, and Gail Schuster. Thank you to our nurses. There are also several departments whose leaders and staff made the vaccination clinics possible, including the Radnor Township School District Operations and Security Department, the Human Resources Department, the Communications Department, Food Services, and the Maintenance and Custodial Staff. It really took an army to pull it off so safely and efficiently for the community and for the greater community in Delaware County. And while I'm here tonight, I'd like, I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to the dozens of staff members of Penn Medicine at Radnor who also came, and the scores of volunteers who showed up at these clinics to help, to guide people, to give out water. I came to one or two of the days and I saw parents volunteering in the hallways who, you know, had nothing to do with the county and nothing to do with the structure, and they, everyone stepped forward to make it happen. It was, it was really breathtaking. So with all of that, I will now go ahead and read the resolution, which is a little long, so I'm going to speed read. Whereas, the first COVID-19 case in the state of Pennsylvania was reported to be in Delaware County on March 6, 2020, forever changing the lives of 576,830 residents of Delaware County. And whereas Delaware County, as well as the entire world, has suffered immense losses and challenges due to the COVID-19 pandemic for the past 19 months, including the loss of lives, serious illnesses, loss of jobs and income, closing of schools, businesses, isolation, and depression. And whereas, during the COVID-19 pandemic, numerous organizations, institutions, individuals... And whereas, during the COVID-19 pandemic, numerous organizations, institutions, individuals answered the call to serve residents of Delaware County during a critical time, leading COVID-19 mitigation efforts for the county during a time when it was faced with navigating and surviving a deadly global pandemic without a county health department. And whereas, numerous organizations, institutions, and individuals assisted in distributing thousands of PPP, PPE items, administering over 4,500 COVID-19 tests, administering over 157,000 COVID-19 vaccines, coordinating and distributing over $19 million in Delco's drawn grants, and offering and sharing numerous resources to residents and business owners across the county. And whereas, many individuals have gone above and beyond in their efforts to serve the community during the COVID-19 pandemic, and in their selfless dedication to serving the community in the midst of a pandemic, demonstrating their commitment to their fellow neighbors. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the County Council of Delaware County, hereby thank and commend Radnor Township School District for its service and commitment to Delaware County residents in their time of need. So thank you, thank you, thank you, and let's hope we never do it again.
Thank you very much, Ms. Schaefer, and please extend our thanks for the recognition to the entire council. I was trying to think of a more unique expression than "it takes a village," because we hear that all the time, and you said "it takes an army," but it really does take a village to come together, and that's certainly, I think, what most of us saw occur at those vaccine clinics, people coming together from all different communities and all different roles to try to help one another navigate this unprecedented experience that we've been dealing with now for quite some time. So thank you, it's nice to be able to partner with our larger county, and like you said, let's hope that when we partner in the future, it's under better circumstances. So with that, I'd like to move to the recognition, board recognition part of our agenda, and we will begin with the recognition of the Katie Sansom Lacrosse Festival's impact on Radnor and beyond. And to do that recognition, I'd like to ask Mr. Moore to lead us through that.
In 2001, the Katie Sansom Foundation Lacrosse Festival was created by the late Peter Sampson and a community of supporters to raise funds and awareness for spinal cord injury research in the name of Mr. Sampson's daughter Katie. Mr. Sampson founded the Radnor Youth Lacrosse League around 1990, was inducted into the Eastern Pennsylvania Chapter of the U.S. Lacrosse Hall of Fame in 2017, and coached for a time at Radnor High School, where Katie graduated in 1998 and was inducted into the Hall of Fame in 2018. While at RHS, Katie played goalie for the girls' lacrosse team, she went on to play Division III Lacrosse at Middlebury College, where she won a national championship in 1999. The following winter, Katie suffered a spinal cord injury while sledding and became a quadriplegic. The Katie Sansom Foundation Lacrosse Festival began in 2001 at Haverford School and Haverford College, and eventually relocated to Radnor High School, where it was hosted annually until the final event in April 2019. The first festival featured six high school boys' games, but it grew to be the largest high school lacrosse event in the United States, featuring 26 boys' teams and 28 girls' teams playing regular season games in its last year, and raising over $2 million to support medical research and quality-of-life programs for people with spinal cord injuries since its inception. After her injury, after months of rehabilitation and encouragement from family and friends, Katie went back to finish her degree and helped coach her college lacrosse team to two more national titles. In 2004, Katie moved to Arizona to pursue her graduate degree, where she remained for six years. Katie moved back to Philadelphia area in 2010 and became an active member of the Katie Sansom Foundation. The festival celebrated competition, sportsmanship, and the spirit of lacrosse in southeastern Pennsylvania. It also showcased adaptive sports in the region, with an accompanying wheelchair, basketball, rugby, tennis, and lacrosse exhibition on Radnor High School outdoor spaces, and introduced high school students to the concept that athletics is more than wins and losses. Most recently, Katie was instrumental in helping develop a plan for improving accessibility at RHS as a member of the steering committee for the RHS Accessibility and Wellness Infrastructure Project currently underway at the school. For Katie's decades-long commitment to fostering an inclusive environment at Radnor High School, and throughout the area through the festivals, as well as for her collaboration with RHS to provide a venue for raising funds for an important cause for 18 straight years, Radnor Township School District and the school board extend sincere gratitude and appreciation to Katie for the immense positive impact the foundation's work has had on Radnor and beyond. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and congratulations, Katie, to you and your family. Moving on to the next recognition, the Radnor Middle School eighth grader Matthew Townsend is a two-time Geographic B champion, and to do that recognition will be Mr. Jubilier.
Come up, Matthew. Radnor middle schooler, Radnor Middle School eighth grader Matthew Townsend won the school's Geographic B final on March 3 in the middle school auditorium. The win marks his second Geographic B title at RAMS, having previously won the competition as a sixth grader in January 2020. All RMS students in grades 6 through 8 took an online qualifying exam in social studies classes, and the top 10 scorers, all of whom scored over 90%, advanced to the school finals. Joining Matthew as school finalists were runner-up Nora Ellis and Adam, excuse me if I pronounce this wrong, Beljou, Bryce Carlton, Jonathan Gonzalez, Ryan Lai, Eshan Patel, Ben Stout, and Anru Zhu. Each finalist had a chance to answer questions, similar to Spelling Bee format, and incorrect answers resulted in elimination. The championship round was made up of three questions, with Matthew ultimately winning with his correct response to the following prompt, and I'd like everyone to try to answer this before Matthew does. You win a prize, superintendent for a day. Name the large chain of volcanic islands that stretches about 1,200 miles westward from the Alaskan Peninsula. Matthew's parents are ineligible to answer this question. I see, oh, no, no. It's like Jeopardy, the correct answer. Matthew, do you want to answer it?
The Aleutian Islands.
What were the Aleutian Islands? Oh, we all, that, yes. The superintendent, along with the board and the Radnor community congratulates Matthew, his parents, his teachers, on this outstanding accomplishment. And I understand, I think you were in class with my other daughter, Ally, so she's proud of you as well. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Matthew, to you and your family. Thank you, Mr. Jubilier. And the next recognition will be 10 Radnor High School seniors who are going to be inducted tomorrow night into the National Technical Honor Society. And to do that recognition, Dr. Babson will lead us through that.
So tonight, we have 10 Radnor High School seniors who will be inducted into the National Technical Honor Society. So what I'm going to do is do the announcement, then I'm going to ask for each person to come up and receive their certificate. So Radnor High School seniors Victoria DeFridis, Isabel Deputy, Redema Jane, Caitlin Lee, Leah Lenthal-Cleary, Allison Miltonberger, Prabgun Oberoi, Grace Purcell, Anna Ramesh, and Lauren Shuketti will all be inducted into the National Technical Honor Society at a March 23 ceremony at the Delaware County Technical Schools Aston, PA campus. All students are currently enrolled in the Delaware County Technical Schools Medical Careers Program. The mission of the NTHS is to honor student achievement in leadership and career in technical education, promote educational excellence, award scholarships, and enhance career opportunities for the NTHS membership. So what I'd like to do is just call out the names, and you can come up, receive your certificate, go to either side, please. Victoria DeFridis? And we'll ask to hold applause for all until the end. Isabel Deputy? Is Isabel here tonight? Okay. Redema Jane? Caitlin Lee? Leah Lenthal-Cleary? If you would, just go over here. Okay, Allison Miltonberger? Prabgun Oberoi? Grace Purcell? Anna Ramesh? And Lauren Shuketti. Pardon me if I mispronounce anyone's names tonight. Congratulations. There you go. So the superintendent, along with the board and the Radnor community congratulates these students, their parents, and their teachers on this outstanding accomplishment.
I think Mr. Petiti, our communications director, may do some other pictures in the back, so parents, you can join them there, and students, congratulations, and considering you have another night, tomorrow night as well, you have a pass from staying for the rest of this board meeting if you don't want to stay. You're more than welcome to stay, but you don't feel like you have to stay, but congratulations.
And I'll add that I am confident that the future of medicine is in good hands, thanks to all of you. So thank you, and I hope the experience was a good one for all of you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, everybody. We're going to move into the next portion of our meeting, which is public comment. The board will provide an opportunity at each regular board meeting for eligible participants to comment on matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before the board. The board requires the public participants be residents of the district, be taxpayers of the district, be persons with a legal or contractual right to address the board, be persons recognized by the presiding officer as having a special interest such that addressing the board would be appropriate, and sign in with their name and address. And we have moved the sign-in sheet to the podium for anybody who is planning to speak this evening. Eligible participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface their comments by an announcement of their name. Oh, I see Dr. Babson. During virtual meetings, public comments sent by email must include the commenter's name, street address, town, and topic to be addressed. Individual comments shall be limited to not more than four minutes, as per policy, six meetings and public participation. Administration will respond to general questions raised during public comment sometime after the meeting. Parents with questions specific to their child's educational experience are encouraged to contact their child's teacher and/or building principal directly. Should you be unable to attend this board meeting, comments can be submitted by email to boardcomments@rtsd.org or in writing to Mr. Michael Petiti, Radnor Township School District, 135 South Wayne Avenue, Wayne, Pennsylvania 19087. Is there any public comment? And I'm guessing, oh, is that Mr.? No, Mr. King? No? Well, given that there are just a few people in the room, I'm going to assume that there is no in-person public comment at this time. As far as emailed public comment, we don't have our administrator at the desk right now, he's busy taking photographs of our students who've been recognized. So I think we're going to just pause for a second, because it looks like Dr. Bachelor is trying to secure Mr. Petiti perhaps, to see if we have any emailed public comment. There's no public comment. Okay, thank you. So we will move to the next portion of our meeting, which is the report from board committees. And we'll start, actually, the curriculum committee report was to be given by Ms. Dunn, and given that she's not at the meeting, I don't know if, Dr. Babson, you're prepared to stand in for her, or we could just give an update next month?
I think I'm going to pass.
Okay. All right, that will move us then to the facilities committee report, and that will be given by Ms. Monahan.
The facilities committee met on March 8, and on the agenda today is ratification of five change orders, four with Level 1 or superintendent approval, and the remaining, and one with Level 2, which was approved by board president, facilities chair, and the superintendent. That's it. Our next meeting is going to, I believe Dr. Bachelor had already mentioned that there will be an April 19 special meeting of the board, at which we will get an update on the facility review or the Shaping the Future Community forums that have been held.
Thank you, Ms. Monahan. The finance committee report, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mrs. Goldman. The finance committee met on March 15 in the District Administration Building. There are a number of financial action items on Section 11 of your agenda tonight. I will also highlight a few of the priority action items that were discussed at the committee. There are three items related to funding for the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, the general operating budget, the special education agreement, and also the budget for the Delaware County Technical Schools Program. We did discuss those at the finance committee, so I hope all board members were able to review that and get their questions answered from the administration about those three DCIU items that are on our agenda. There is one other DCIU item on the agenda. As you may know, I began as the representative to the DCIU, succeeding and fulfilling the end of Mrs. Goldman's term. That term ends in July, and so here we are again, the board has to consider whether they are willing to appoint me for a full term, starting in July for that position. I'll also highlight one item that came up in our budget presentation. Mr. Pauling gave us a budget update, which I will not summarize, but I do encourage all board members who have not had a chance to take their time with that budget update and send your questions to Mr. Pauling about that. But at the conclusion of the budget update, Mr. Pauling presented the possibility of an interesting new program, which would be a property tax rent rebate program. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania already has such a program for eligible Pennsylvanians age 65 and older, widows and widowers age 50 and older, and people with disabilities age 18 and older, where they are able to, based on certain income levels, receive a rebate on their property tax payments. There are other districts in the Commonwealth that have found a mechanism to supplement that rebate, and so Mr. Pauling presented for discussion the possibility that we in Radnor may want to look into a program like that to ease some of the burden on some of the more financially vulnerable residents in our community. There's no action item related to that on the agenda for tonight, but if you go back and watch the finance committee meeting and send your ideas to Mr. Pauling, any feedback you have about that new proposal, there may be something more concrete from the administration coming to the next finance committee meeting as a recommendation for the board to consider. So please stay tuned for that. So the next finance committee meeting is scheduled to be, I believe it is, the first Tuesday of April, and as Mrs. Monahan mentioned, as part of that April 19 special board meeting, we will be discussing the budget after we discuss the facilities plan update. So those are two important meetings all board members should pay attention to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And for the policy committee report, Ms. Duffy.
Yes, the policy committee met on March 8. There are two policies that were moved forward on tonight's agenda for a second read, that's Policy 216, Student Records, and Policy 919, Civility. We also had a pretty lengthy discussion about Policy 006. We also had a pretty lengthy discussion about Policy 006, Meetings in Public Participation. We are going to continue that conversation next month on April 5th, and hopefully we'll be seeing that for a first read next month.
Thank you.
The next business meeting, I think I said, the next policy meeting is April 5th.
Thank you, Ms. Duffy. And the government relations and communications committee report, Dr. Babson.
So, the GRCC met on Tuesday, March 8th, at 7:00 PM in the garden level of the administration building. I believe that's what we're calling. Ms. Petiti provided a legislative update and committee discussion centered on school funding issues and the governor's budget. Committee also discussed hosting our eighth annual legislative breakfast, which is scheduled for Thursday, April 7th, at Radnor Middle School Library at 8:30 AM. And per Dr. Bachelor's mention earlier, there was also discussion during the meeting of prioritizing communications about our long-term facilities plan. The next meeting of the GRCC is tentatively scheduled for April 5th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Dr. Babson. Now, we'll move into our priority discussion and action portion of the agenda. Agenda item 8.01 is the request to approve the Delaware County Intermediate Unit General Operating Budget for 2022-2023. The recommended action is that the board approves the Delaware County Intermediate Unit General Operating Budget for 2022-2023 in the amount of $10,49,100 with Radnor Township School District's share also approved in the amount of $81,575.67. At the March 15th, 2022 Finance Committee meeting, direction was given to administration to approve the annual budget for the operation of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit for the 2022-2023 fiscal year in the amount of $10,49,100 with Radnor Township School District's portion for 2022-2023 being $81,575.67. The intermediate unit must be, budget must be considered and approved by each local board at a regular or special meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Stern. Administration, you don't have anything in particular, this has gone through. Is there, are there any board, God bless you, are there any board comments or questions?
Well, is this a roll call vote?
No, this is not a roll call vote.
Oh, I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Okay, duly noted. Any other comments or questions? All right, then I will call the vote. All those in favor indicate by raising your hand and saying aye. Okay, that's a one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, to nothing with one abstention. Thank you very much. All right, item 8.02, request to approve the Delaware County Technical Schools Program Budget Summary 2022-2023. The recommended action is that the board approves the Delaware County Technical School Program Budget for 2022-2023 in the amount of $15,492,198 with Radnor Township School District's portion being $317,762 for the Aston-Fulcroft Half Day Program with $0 for the Special Education Technical Program for the total budgeted amount of $317,762. At the March 15th, 2022 Finance Committee meeting, the committee gave direction to administration to approve the 2022-2023 Delaware County Technical School Program Budget in the amount of $15,492,198 with Radnor Township School District's portion being $317,762 for the Aston-Fulcroft Half Day Program and $0 for the Special Education Technical Program. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Babson.
Point of wonder, Ms. Goldman? I read our minutes from last year, and these items were a roll call vote last year, so I'd like to suggest that we go back and redo our vote on these items as a roll call, just to cover our bases, because that is how they were handled last year.
I believe that's how we've tended every year in the past.
And we have a new business administrator, so no.
I didn't want to say anything.
Yeah, exactly. These are roll call votes.
Before, yeah, just let me check to see if, you know, either Brian or solicitor could comment on whether it's, we may have done, obviously did do a roll call vote. Was it a requirement to do a roll call vote?
It's my understanding it's not required. We just have to record the individual votes with the members that were absent and the members that abstained. So, when we send that back to the intermediate unit, that's what they require from their end for documentation.
I mean, I'm just going to say for the last however many years, we've done it as a roll call. Yeah, that's, I mean, but, okay, that's fine.
Okay, so we have taken a motion and a second. I don't think there's a need for an administrative presentation because it went through finance. Is there, are there any board, additional board member questions or comments before I call the vote?
I'm going to abstain from this vote as well.
Okay, so we have Ms. Solomon who is abstaining, and again, we have Ms. Dunn who has an excused absence this evening. With that, I'd like to call the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye. Okay, the motion is approved, seven to nothing with one abstention and one excused absence. Moving on to agenda item 8.03, approval of the 2022-2023 Delaware County Intermediate Unit Special Education Funding and Service Agreement. The recommended action is that the board approves an agreement between Radnor Township School District and the Delaware County Intermediate Unit for the 2022-2023 school year Special Education Intergovernmental Funding and Service Agreement at an estimated cost of $174,491. The payments shall be made in accordance with the schedule outlined in the Special Education Intergovernmental Funding and Service Agreement, and final reconciliation of payments to expenses will be completed no later than November 1st, 2023. The Delaware County School Districts again have agreed to contract with the Delaware County Intermediate Unit to maintain and operate a program of special education services in accordance with the provisions of the Special Education Plan of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit as submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Education. The cost of this program is $20,000, $20,005, $20 million, excuse me, $20,555,107 as described in the 2022-2023 Special Education Budget as adopted by the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors on March 2nd, 2022. Radnor Township School District's estimated share will be $174,491, and final reconciliation will occur no later than November 1st, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jubelier. Are there any board comments or questions?
I need to abstain from this vote as well.
Thank you. Ms. Solomon will be abstaining, and again, Ms. Dunn has an excused absence. With that, if there aren't any other questions or comments, I will call the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye. Motion passes seven to nothing with one abstention and one excused absence. Thank you. Agenda item 8.04, appointment of board member to the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors. The recommended action is that the Board of School Directors appoints Mr. Bradley Moore as a candidate to serve on the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors for the term July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. This will be a roll call vote. That the Board of School Directors appoints Bradley Moore as a candidate to serve as a member of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors for a term commencing July 1st, 2022 and ending on June 30th, 2025. Mr. Pauling, are you going to do the roll call vote? And we need a motion and a second to approve.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Ms. Duffy, a second from Mr. Jubelier. Any comments or questions? Ms. Solomon, do you need to abstain from this one?
Well, it's a roll call vote, so I'll do it at that time.
Okay. All right, so who is, Mr. Pauling, you're going to conduct? Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Babson?
Aye.
Ms. Duffy?
Aye.
Ms. Dunn, is absent. Ms. Goldman?
Aye.
Mr. Jubelier?
Aye.
Ms. Monahan?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Solomon?
I abstain from this vote. Nothing personal, Bradley.
Ms. Stern?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes with seven approvals, one absence, and one abstention.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, Mr. Moore. Thank you for representing our school district for the next three years at the Delaware County Intermediate Unit.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, we'll move then into our consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. With the consent of all board members, they are therefore grouped and approval is given in one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any item, the board president will move it to an appropriate place on the agenda. Does anybody have any item they would like to pull this evening? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Solomon. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Duffy. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that is a seven to nothing approval with one.
Eight to.
I'm sorry, eight to nothing approval, thank you, with one excused absence. All right. That takes us all the way through to our, look at that, reports from board liaisons and community announcements. The Delaware County Community College, Ms. Solomon, I believe you have a nice update for us this evening.
I have a report, so, the community college, actually, it was today, held interviews. There are two vacancies on the community college board. Now, the way the organization is structured, a school board member from each of the 15 districts in the county is on the liaison committee to the community college, but they have an elected board, not elected, we choose the board. The liaison committee selects the people that are on their actual board. So, there are 13 members on the board, and there were two vacancies, and so, all board member, the liaisons from all 15 districts were invited to participate in the interviews, which, like I said, were held today. And so, coming out very shortly will be the names of the two people that were selected, and then those names will come back to this board probably at our next business meeting for us to vote on, if we want to approve that. The other thing I found out, which I don't know how I missed, but Dr. Gates Black, who is the current president of the board, has issued her retirement. Now, I think she's going to be there for another year, but they will, so within the next year, the college will be looking for a new president, and I think that's it for now.
Thank you, Ms. Solomon, and thank you for your service to the Delaware County Community College. I just, one quick correction, Dr. Black is the president of the college, not the board. You had said president of the board, just want to make that distinction.
She is the president of the Delaware County Community College, excuse me.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, next to the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Mr. Moore.
All right, well, thank you again, board members, for the opportunity to continue in this role, and I will serve as best I can. We met as a DCIU board on March 2nd, and then we had committee meetings on March 9th. I know Mrs. Goldman has told you this before, but as a reminder and a refresh, any board member is welcome to see the agenda and documentation for our DCIU board meetings as well. Those are available online on the DCIU website. And I certainly welcome questions, if you come up with questions in advance of a DCIU board meeting, I'd be happy to bring those to my fellow DCIU board members, and certainly get back to you with information answering your question if we're not able to get that cleared up in the meeting itself. At that March 2nd meeting, we spent a substantial portion of the time discussing the three budgets that we just approved. In our DCIU board meeting, we approved the general operating budget and the special education budget, and then in the Delaware County Technical Schools board meeting, we approved the budget for that program. Other items that were discussed this month include, and I believe Mrs. Goldman gave an update on this last month when she was concluding her service in this position, there's a substantial renovation and construction project going on at the Fulcroft campus, which is going to offer an incredible opportunity to bring a lot of the programming for both the DCIU and the technical school into one location. Right now, so much of the services that the Delaware County IU and the DCTS provide are in leased space all over the county, and this is going to create a lot of efficiencies and opportunity for students. I had a little bit of deja vu in some of those discussions because a lot of the conversation was about how to finance that project. So, discussions that we had over a year about, a year ago about bonds and interest rates and wraparound versus flat financing were coming before the IU. So, if you enjoyed those discussions so much that we had a year ago and cannot wait for our own facilities master plan to come through, you could continue to follow what we're doing at the DCIU on that. We also talked about our ESAR plan expenditures for the technical school, just as we are receiving ESAR funds, the DCIU and the DCTS are receiving ESAR funds, and just as we did, they need to publish what their plan is for the use of those funds under the allowable categories of spending. There was also an update about the application and admission process for the Delaware County Technical Schools, and of local interest, I did want to note that as of March 3rd, that was the information available, as the time of those meetings, there had been 30 Radnor students who had applied for the technical schools program. And as I continue to serve in this role, I'll be looking to hear and learn more about how our own high school is offering this technical school program, and I see some of our fine high school representatives in the audience, and, you know, that's, I'd really be excited to hear about what that looks like on the ground at RHS as well. There is an event that I also wanted to announce tomorrow evening, March 23rd at 7:00 PM at the Aston campus of the technical school, there is going to be the National Technical Honors induction ceremony. So, we are continuing to honor those students who were recognized, and anyone who wants to attend that ceremony is certainly welcome to do so. And that concludes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Appreciate that. And the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, Ms. Duffy.
Yes, I have two items to bring to the board's attention. PSBA will be hosting virtual sectional meetings. There are four in total. They're from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. The first is on March 29th, it's on mental health and partnering with county resources. On March 31st, it'll be on ESAR funds. On April 4th, it's labor issues and shortages, and hosted by our very own Ms. Goldman. And then for six, federal and state budgeting. So, there'll be expert presenters and networking opportunities, and sign up is currently, you can currently sign up online. I think we could say that April is advocacy month because in addition to our legislative breakfast on April 7th, PSBA is hosting Advocacy Day in Harrisburg on April 25th. There is, it will be in person this year, but there is a virtual option if you would rather attend virtually, and it's a chance to meet, well, if you're there in person, face-to-face with our lawmakers and advocate for public education. The two main items will be adequate funding and charter school reform.
Thank you, Ms. Duffy. Are there any other community announcements that board members would like to make? Mr. Jubelier?
Thank you. I wanted to share that on behalf of the Radnor High School Scholarship Fund, we're very pleased to announce that Lilly Politzer, King of Prussia, will be hosting a shop and share event on Sunday, April 3rd, from 11:00 to 3:00. The first hour is a private event for just the Radnor community. The store is located outside on the main floor of Nordstrom's in the King of Prussia Mall. Radnor High School Scholarship Fund will receive 10% of those, of the sales, the proceeds. If you're searching for just the right outfit for school social events, hint, hint, a gift for a child or a grandchild, or just to refresh your summer wardrobe, Lilly Politzer, Lilly Politzer at KOP is the spot to be, Sunday, April 3rd, and we'll maybe share this with the community in other forums as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jubelier. Are there any other community announcements that board members would like to share? Okay, seeing none, that will move us into the next item on our agenda, which is new business. Is there any new business this evening? Seeing none, we are going to.
Can I make one, just in case it's not on people's radar, the ABC House is having their 50th gala on April 29th, it's a Friday, so tickets are now available online, and I think you get a discount if you buy them before April 15th. They'll be hosted at St. David's Golf Club.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Duffy. And we are going to move into board announcements. On Tuesday, April 5th, at 5:00, the board will hold its policy committee meeting. At 6:00, it will hold its finance committee meeting, and at 7:00, it will hold a curriculum committee meeting. All of those meetings will be held on the ground floor or garden, however we're calling it right now, the garden conference room of the district administration building. it right now, the garden conference room of the district administration building, 135 South Wayne Avenue in Wayne. I think we better get some plants growing down there if we're going to continue with this new name of the Garden View Conference Room. Tuesday, April 19th at 5:00, the board will host a second curriculum committee meeting for the month, and at 7:00, as mentioned earlier, there will be a special meeting of the board to approve the proposed final budget and provide an update on the Shaping the Future Initiative and some other facilities items that may be on the agenda. That, too, will be held in the ground floor, garden floor, conference room of the district administration building, 135 South Wayne Avenue in Wayne. And then Tuesday, April 26th at 7:00, we will have our monthly regular business meeting back here in the Radnorshire Room of the Radnor Township Municipal Building, 301 Ivan Avenue in Radnor. At this time, we will move to public comment on new issues raised or subjects developed following priority discussion and action items. The board will provide an opportunity at each regular board meeting for eligible participants to comment on matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before the board. The board requires that public participants be residents of the district, be taxpayers of the district, be persons with a legal or contractual right to address the board, be persons recognized by the presiding officer as having a special interest such that addressing the board would be appropriate, and sign in with their name and address. Eligible participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface their comments by an announcement of their name. During virtual meetings, public comments sent by email must include the commenter's name, street address, town, and topic to be addressed. Individual comment shall be limited to not more than four minutes as per policy six meetings in public participation. Administration will respond to general questions raised during public comments sometime after the meeting. Parents with questions specific to their child's educational experience are encouraged to contact their child's teacher and/or building principal directly. Should you be unable to attend this board meeting, comments can be submitted by email to boardcomments@rtsd.org or in writing to Mr. Michael Petiti, Radnor Township School District, 135 South Wayne Avenue, Wayne, Pennsylvania, 19087. I do not necessarily see any public comment in the room this evening, just double checking, and I'm going to ask Mr. Petiti, do we have any emails?
None this evening.
Okay, so at this point then, we are ready to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Ms. Solomon, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Duffy, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand and saying aye. Okay, that looks like an eight to nothing in the affirmative. We are adjourned for this evening. Good night, everyone.